Good evening and welcome to the January 18th City of New Franklin Council Meeting. We have 1, 2, 3 first readings tonight, 4 first readings tonight. And our first reading is Resolution Number 23R01. Mr. Cox.
We will open the Finance Committee meeting at 6:01. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Sun Life Financial for life, voluntary life, and voluntary vision insurance for New Franklin's health insurance plan declaring an emergency. Sun Life Financial for life, uh, Fox, Sun Life Financial. We have been with them for quite a few years. There's no rate increase, uh, no changes to benefits. Questions?
Hmm, how about the base, no rate increase?
Permission to wave 3? We do have enough to vote, okay? And so we will ask to wave to 3 on Resolution 23R01. Next one is Resolution 23R02, a resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2022 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency. And this is the amount of $26,467.50 to the Benner Road Bridge Fund contractual effective 12/30 due to additional pass-through payments.
Yeah, and that's what happened. We cut the ribbon on that several months ago. But as some of you may know, the, sometimes the engineers, et cetera, are a little slow getting invoices through to the state and then the state getting to us. So we received another invoice from them and we need to increase the appropriations. The states, the county, the city shares this about $981, but it's pass-through money. So we need to adjust the appropriations to permit for that.
Good percentage there.
We're told that this is the last one, but yeah, we like that. It's not a lie. We're told that this is it, but things seem to trickle in from the state sometimes.
Is this actually possible?
They're not as efficient.
Yeah, what questions do you have regarding this? Permission to wave 3 on this? Super, we will close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:04. Two minutes for two resolutions.
And we have the Safety Committee. Kevin, would you like to read this? Resolution number 22, 23R03, since Mr. Barrows is not here.
This is unsafe, Kevin.
Mr. Barrows. And you, Angela?
You guys are bullying me here.
We're not bullying you.
6:00, open up a Finance Committee, Safety Committee at 6:04. Resolution 23R03, a resolution authorizing the New Franklin Fire Department to purchase, install, maintain, and maintain an appropriate number of automated external defibrillators at Grill, Lakeside, Miracle Park, Sizzler, and Lockhart Field during an emergency. I do have a few logistical questions, which I'm assuming you're well-prepared for. So being a person who has an implanted device, it's pretty exciting, you know, to see that. How are we securing them? What's the process there?
Um, we're looking at the group, the AEDs we're looking to purchase will have a cabinet. The cabinets will be, we're looking at either mounting them on a post or mounting them specifically to the buildings. So that they also have, where we would have the capability of Wi-Fi, they are Wi-Fi compatible. So, and actually what would happen is eventually the ones that were Wi-Fi, we would be hoping to tie in with, not only could we, we could check the status of them simply by the Wi-Fi, but also if they were removed from the cabinet, there would be an alert that would go to dispatch to advise them that one had been taken out of the cabinet.
Those are the ones I'm familiar with, as soon as that door opens.
Yes. And then also they will have, those cabinets have a strobe and an alarm on them. So if anybody opens that cabinet, that strobe will go off and the alarm will call.
Some of, yeah, some of the parks are a little bit more visited than others, obviously. I mean, are they just, just to call on somebody grabbing one and going after Kevin? I mean, is that at risk there?
The, um, well, no, because the ones we're looking at are fully automated defibrillators. They, the way they would work is if you place the patches on, they would have to detect an actual disrhythm, you know, before they'll shock anybody. So they're, they're, once you, basically the fully automated, once you place the patches on, you don't have to do anything. It senses everything, it will, and it always prompts you, shock is advised, please step back, it will go ahead and do the shock. Whereas the semi-automatic will, it'll, it'll go through those same steps, but then it, you have to physically press the button to shock. Whereas with the fully, which the ones we're looking at are fully automatic. So basically, once you put the patches on, you're, and then it will prompt you for CPR in between.
And all along, we're on the way.
And we should, yes, we'll be on the way.
I've been on the recipient side of the panels as well, so I appreciate all that.
Yes, actually, it's, it's, it's very good. I mean, in light of, you saw the football player that went down, I mean, it happens a lot. Statistically, or studies have shown that early defibrillation with an AED nearly doubles your chance of walking out of the hospital. So that's pretty impressive. They also say that several other studies, or other studies have shown that if you have that AED, if you have ventricular fibrillation, which is a very common rhythm that you go into with sudden cardiac arrest, if you are defibrillated within three minutes, your chances of, your survivability is 74%. After that, if you drop anything over three minutes, it drops, it's still good, it's 48%, but it's, it drops. So within that first three minutes is where you're, you really keep that survival rate up there.
So every public facility really should have one, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
That is fascinating, honestly.
I think that's, that's fantastic.
And the fact that you're fully automated, I think that's wonderful.
What was the cost of these? And did we end up with some grants or something? I'm sure it was in the DAS.
Well, the actual cost, the cost we have is to purchase LifePak defibrillators, which are through Physio Control, which is the same company where, that we get our heart monitors from. We've used LifePak heart monitors my whole career, so 40-plus years here. Very good company, very reputable. We already have a contract or an account with them, because obviously we take care of our monitors in it. They gave us a quote of the LifePak CR2 Wi-Fi compatible, eight-year warranty with a four-year battery, the wall cabinet with the alarms and strobes, and they were at $2,139 each.
Wow, I wouldn't have thought those were a lot more.
We are close away.
So they gave me a quote for six. We had a quote, I went around all the parks, looked at them. I'm really thinking that we need to do seven instead of the six. And the seven units will cost us, he is giving me a new quote with the, with the seven units, but we're looking at $14,900 and, I should pull my glasses. I was looking about it, though, what was I going to say?
I would say that's some of the best $14,000 that could have been ever spent.
I agree.
What are we doing for maintenance, so I know we got to be checking on a regular basis? Is that something our staff will do?
Well, that's, that's something we will do. We'll develop a policy in-house. I have personnel right now that handle CPR training and that. They'll be tasked with, we'll set that up on a, on a regular basis. Somebody will go out. And the ones that aren't connected to the Wi-Fi, even the ones that are connected to the Wi-Fi, we'll physically go out and check. But what's nice about the Wi-Fi is it will send you if the battery is low or there's an issue with the monitor, you'll automatically get that. And a, and that includes a software to handle it. So other than that, we'll go out and physically check them.
Does this company have a sell option as well? Because there may be some areas that are not close enough or really easily connected to Wi-Fi?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know. I could, I could check with them on that, but.
I mean, you know, some of the more harder-to-reach areas, or maybe a solution sooner than later to get help on the layups and is there a problem?
Yeah, yeah. That may be, that would be something I'll look into too, is the, the sell option. I don't believe they have it, but I'll, I can double-check on it.
So if, a slightly different question, if a local business wanted to buy one of these, because I honestly, I had no idea they were that affordable.
I appreciate it.
Would the fire department be able to help support that device? Check on if anything that might need to be, I, I don't, I don't know.
They're, quite honestly, they're very simple. I mean, there's, you know, and now the newer ones, especially if you're going to put them in your business and you tie them into your Wi-Fi, it's literally, somebody can click on a computer and see what the battery's status is. It's a lot like, you know, anymore, your cars or anything else, you can just about check everything. But, and then we have helped some people with, with acquiring batteries for theirs. A lot of the, some of the older units that are out there. The, at, at Lockhart Field, the youth football has their own AED that they bring for football events. We assisted them with getting replacement parts for theirs. So, yeah, we've.
You can support, but this doesn't sound like there's a lot of support necessary.
No, with the four-year battery, you know, it's, it's, they're really, now, technology, even from, from 10 years ago, has improved so much. They're now using the lithium-ion batteries. It's no more than I did batteries. It's no more you have to worry about, you know, the temperature fluctuations and all that. So, yeah.
Good stuff.
Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I'm going to do a hats off to Mr. Cox. That's how this originated.
I know, yes, sir.
And really, really, very much appreciated. And obviously, this is the kind of thing we want to do before the fact and after the fact.
True, that's good.
What we're looking at is two at Sizzler, one by the ball fields and one out by the tennis courts, one at Grill, two at the Tudor House, one inside and one out by the restroom, one at Lakeside, and one at Lockhart. And what we have found is that supply chain exists everywhere. Have these been ordered, well, if they've been ordered last week, they come at the end of June. If we order them tomorrow, we're probably looking at July. And so certainly, you know, this might be one which we consider possibly, wait with three readings so we can get this thing going.
I bet, I bet after the football player, people were buying these things off the shelf like they want to.
I didn't mean to preempt you.
All right. A couple of things real quick. Do we have signage? Are we ordering any signage to put around to let people know?
The cabinets themselves are, are display, and then we'll, we'll add where we, where we determine we'll need extra signage.
Okay.
We can add signage.
Super. And you talked about having to make this your CPR person probably, you know, being in charge of that. Is there any way to possibly do, either organize or impromptu classes or get to know your AED type thing, where, where you go and visit, like even with the Little Leagues and show the kids, this is what it is? Because I'm sure, as easy as it is to just put paddles on, on a person, it's probably still very intimidating for someone that's never looked at one or seen one, or, you know, have watched a movie or anything with happening. And if, you know, if there's something in place where, and I know you guys are busy 24/7, but, you know, if there's some time where you can just show up and just say, hey, let's, let's, let's look at this and let me show you how this works.
We're always willing to do that. We, we currently offer CPR classes twice a year that are open to the, to the public. We're working right now with Grace Bible Church on, on getting their staff and their people, you know, trained in CPR. That's the best thing. I would recommend bystander CPR, that everybody take the CPR class.
Right.
And even, you know, you have to renew it. Even if you don't renew it, you're still, you've had that class, you still have an understanding of what you're doing. Just because you're not, I encourage you to renew it because standards change, but you, you get that hands-on, and the AED is part of the CPR class.
Okay. But I certainly encourage then, any organizations, whether it's a pickleball group, a Little League group, whoever that utilizes our parts on a regular basis, I encourage you to reach out to the fire department and try to schedule something. And, and I'm sure whatever class they do will be age-appropriate for, you know, whether it's a Little League kid or, or adults that, you know, with their understanding level. And just so that they have something, a starting point, so that there is an emergency, you know, maybe collectively.
Yeah, by all means, we're willing to, we're willing to assist with that. In fact, actually, this evening, they're, they're doing a basic first aid class for the scouts at the station.
Excellent.
Chief, is this something we could coordinate with the, the schools and maybe have a gym teacher or something that they push out to the kids just to give them some basics on how they work? And then is this something they also have Katie put out on, like in news last show on the locations that it's on?
Yeah, no, we can do the, definitely, we were going to promote the idea of where they're located and where they're at. We currently do all of the, the school staff CPR. We handle all that with the coaches and the teachers and all that annually with, with Manchester Local Schools. So, but yes, we're, that's, that's part of the education is the AED. So if you're talking specifically to students?
Yes.
Or?
Just to give them an idea, obviously, we don't want the younger kids administering this, but at least they would know what it looks like, where to find it, and that may help an adult locate that location.
Yeah, and actually, it's surprising, but you'd be surprised, the, the younger, the high school kids in that, they're more in tune with something like that, this than a lot of people my age, other than the job I'm in. I mean, you know, they're, they're very adept at that. So, yeah, we can, we'll, we'll make sure that we partner up with the schools and make sure we get it out to everybody. And the schools already currently have AEDs in all the schools.
This has come upon us rather quickly, and I'm so happy that it did. And certainly, we'll do a big rollout on this, plenty of publicity and, and let people know they exist and where we are, et cetera, et cetera. We are also setting motion some grant applications to see if we can't get grant money to cover this. There's an AARP grant that's, that we've gone after before for the pickleball courts, and that didn't happen, but this really kind of fits, I think, a little more squarely within those grant guidelines. So fortunately for us, that window is open, and we're going to pursue that as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, at Butler Park and Green, the units are not Wi-Fi, so they have to be inspected once a month, and they have to come by an initial that they were inspected. So it's a good idea to get the Wi-Fi. Also, a lot of the companies will provide a training unit, which is just a very simple unit that they will loan out so that you can train people with it.
We have those units already in the, yeah, we have a number of those units already for our CPR classes to train people with them. Also, in, in what the mayor said about the grant money, yeah, this is, seven of them is a start. There, there's other locations that, you know, throughout the city that I would like to see them placed. You know, I would like to see some in the state parks. I don't believe there's any in this, that I'm aware of in the state parks, so.
What I've done where we work is we've actually put these in the personnel trucks as well. So each, like a crew goes out, we got a line truck. We've got one of these in the line trucks, and we've got them in various distribution trucks and stuff like that.
Would it be possible to reach out to manufacturer to see if they may already have some video content, like YouTube videos or their own? Well, they're, they're out, they're already, yes, they're there. And with the rule out, make those links available. Yeah, we'll, we'll make those links available, yes. Yeah. Physio Control already has on their website, I mean, basically, step by step, how to, how, what you're supposed to do. They have videos of, of where they simulate somebody actually collapsing, and then they have videos of where they just simply go through the steps, the procedure of having, and it's, it's very simple. I mean, open it up, it tells you, look at the, look at the patch, place, you know, remove the clothing, place this patch here and this patch here, and, and you're good to go. So, and then it'll also then, like I said, not only do they do that, but then if, if they sense it, they'll tell you to step back, they'll go ahead and, and apply the shock, and then they'll tell you to go ahead and start CPR, and they'll actually give you the, the prompt, and you need to push on the chest, and they'll give you the rhythm and the, so you're, I mean, it walks you through not only the, the, the defibrillator part, but also the CPR part.
CPR videos.
Because in those times, you, you know, it goes kind of, a lot of people, it goes right out, out the window when you're stressed like that. So it, it kind of gives you those prompts all throughout.
Cool. Fantastic.
Yeah.
And as the mayor mentioned, this, this happened pretty quickly, and even though I've been thinking about it for quite a long time, I just forced the issue, I guess. And I appreciate what you've done, and, you know, in such a short amount of time, you've researched the units and got pricing on them, you went out and checked the parks and determined the number of AEDs and where to put them and stuff. I mean, you didn't just sit back and wait, you, you took off with it right away, and I certainly appreciate the support out there.
I'm both of you, man, we're really proud of both of you, and I am always amazed, honestly. You're the first person I want to see when I'm having trouble. You really are. And I'm always amazed how many different things you do, and we do appreciate that. And Jim, I'm so proud of you. I think this is one important step of life. Yeah, I really do. Because I think this is something the city's going to benefit from.
When he sent that initial email, I was like, Mark, I wish I'd have thought.
We're all saying the same thing.
You don't make it happen, so right there with you.
Okay. I'm going to wrap it up at 6:23.
You're going to wave to Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I think, I'm more than that.
Resolution number 23R04, Mr. Daniels?
Community Development Committee opens at 6:25. 23R04, resolution appointing Kristy Ginnelsberger as the New Franklin member of the Summit County Combined General Health District Board of Health and declaring this emergency. Mr. Adams?
Yes, we have, this, the Advisory Board includes representatives from the various municipalities, villages, townships. Lynn Clark has been our loyal representative for, I said eight years in here, I didn't look back, probably 12 or 16, she's been there a long, long time. God bless her, and she finally said that maybe she'd ready for a rest. Kristy Ginnelsberger is, of course, a local resident who's not far. She is, I did not bring her curriculum or her CBE here, she has a whole list of initials after her name. She's a registered nurse. She is also, has served on a variety of boards, she's on an oversight board with under 1,000 nurses, not under necessarily her direction, but supervision to say. And so we spent some time talking with her, she's talked with them, and she feels she has the time to commit to it, and she's willing to step up, so we're thrilled. She'll be an excellent, excellent representative for New Franklin. This is a four-year term, and it does require a resolution confirming that appointment, and so that's the purpose. And we would like to get this passed, and if we could, the new term actually starts January the first, started January the first of this year. They haven't had any meetings yet, though, since she hasn't missed anything yet.
Could you give a 30-second blurb on what the Summit County Combined General Health District Board of Health and Health is?
Uh, yeah, that's, we don't have, we do not, as a city, have a separate health department. You know, Akron does, Farwood and Did, I don't know if they combined theirs or not, but basically, anything and everything that has to do with health. So, you know, the limelight, obviously, was the whole direction and supervision of COVID. You know, when the monkeypox came along, they were involved with that. Inoculations, they're involved with that. My goodness, Summit County Public Health, they're involved with issues relative to water flow and, and water quality. I'm not doing justice. They have, there's just a broad range of responsibilities. It's all statutory, the health districts. So they're responsible for, they have a clinic over there, they have dental, free, by the way, at their, at their center, out, out off of West Market Street. So, yeah, they're, anything and everything that has to do with health, they are our agent because we don't individually as a city. And it makes sense, of course, to not have to, to not have those under our.
She'll be a member of the governing board of that?
An advisory board.
An advisory board.
Right. And right now, I'm on the governing, the mayor's on the governing board. Yeah, well, and, yeah. And Barry Cano also serves on the, as a representative. There's basically the governing board, there's an advisory board, and I can't remember the name of the third board, but he's, he's a member of that on behalf of Springfield, so very good.
Were you okay with waving 3?
Yep.
Makes sense to me. Okay.
Community Development closes at 6:28.
Does anyone have any questions or anything else to add? And I'd like to follow the order at 6:26, January 18th, me, the City of New, Council meeting of the City of New Franklin, everybody who stands in class, I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator, can you do a hand down? Would you all fall?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Present.
And I'd like to make the motion for the approval of the minutes and the regular scheduled meeting on January 4.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator, would you do a roll call?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes 6:24 to, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for December 2022, subject to audit.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Would you pass this? Is there any public comment, anything that the public would like to say at this time? Yes?
Mark Sedlak, Rome Road. Now, just now, we'd like to, once again, extend my thanks to the council for having approved doing the paper survey. We tallied all the results last week, and almost two-thirds of the responses we got were from the paper survey versus the online survey. So having done so gave us a much broader response from, from the community, and will help us in evaluating what the community really wants for the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else have anything to ask?
Hi, my name's Lynn Egert, and I live on Wilmar Drive, post Turkey Foot Golf Course. And there's concerned citizens regarding the pending sale and development of Turkey Foot Golf Course, and just wondering if the council or anyone here has received any type of proposals that should be public knowledge as to what that direction is going to be?
I think Paul would probably be the one to answer that easier.
We have not. There's been nothing.
No proposals?
No. There's been discussions, but no proposals. If and when they're presented, there, there will be a public process, likely through planning and zoning first. And that requires public hearings as well. And then if it was, if, if any change or any changes to that, the zoning in that area were part of that proposal, not only the planning and zoning, have to approve it, but then it would come to council, council would have public hearings, and then council would have the final say. So there's a, it's a, it's a very transparent process, but it, it begins when they present something to us, and that hasn't happened yet. but it, it begins when they present something to us, and that hasn't happened yet.
Dan, how, Dan, we just don't know anything yet.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
How, how do, what's the notification process, then? Is that the, how do we know once the, you know, things are, are starting to be received here in cities first?
Well, I would think you wouldn't know when they're first received until a public hearing.
Well, yeah, and again, I don't wanna...
Unless it's just by hearing sometime.
Uh, if it's, I believe, and, and I'd have to look at our zoning book. But I, and normally, certainly, if, if somebody proposes a rezoning in a particular area, the adjacent property owners are all, all receive notice, as, that's, that's in the code itself. So I would say that if, in fact, there's a proposal and change, I mean, that'll happen for whatever, whoever the adjacent property owners are. We'll do everything we can certainly to publicize it. I can assure you of that. And it looks like the press is paying attention, too. So, you know, I, I think, you know...
There's a lot of rumors.
Yeah, well, there's that. Nobody likes that, but...
Paul, can we get a list of names of people that definitely want to be notified? And once we get information of, in the public?
That would be all residents of Point Comfort Drive, Wilmar Drive, Florian Drive, Vera, and everybody over in Alwood Hills and Delawarewood.
If you guys could leave your name with...
May I get your name?
Sure.
Sure, it's Mark Rum, C R U M.
C R U M, and your address?
Uh, 408 Florian Drive.
Thank you. Okay.
But there, there is a list of residents that do want to be notified, and we're looking for transparency before the process even starts because there's a lot of concerns, obviously. We love our golf course. We're not looking for high-density housing. I can guarantee you that. And I think I speak for almost everybody that lives down that road. Thank you.
Is, with the notification, I guess, I don't know how the process works with the zoning change. Is it just adjacent properties? Or is there a way to say, well, because of the shape of points, all that, is there a way to notify the, the area? You know what I mean? Because it's such a tight...
Guys, from a discretionary standpoint, we can certainly extend the area of notification without a question.
Okay.
Yeah, technically, there's probably only three homes that are adjacent.
Right, well, that's exactly what I'm saying. But the shape of that, of that lends itself that there's gonna be a need.
And then the public hearings are advertised and posted. So we try to get word out to the entire community, not just the next...
I apologize that we came late. I thought this started at six, but apparently you started earlier.
No, it's...
Okay, I was following his...
When, when the pledge started, that's when the...
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hey, if you, if you want to send me an email, and I'd be happy to start gathering all the emails to make sure that gets, because an email lasts as easy to pull out.
Yep, sure is.
We make sure you guys get it.
I'll get it, thank you.
And I think the key right now is, we don't know anything definitely.
We have.
And that's all we're saying, is that we just don't know anything definitely. So it would be unwise to say something that we're not sure of.
Right.
If we, if we say it, it sounds official, even if it's just...
Will the planning committee have any input on this also with the surveys that went out? I'm sure they've gathered information regarding residents and...
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about, about the steering committee a little bit later in the meeting. And yeah, that, that's, that's the exact concept of having a steering committee is to, to give some guidance to that.
Our first reading is resolution number 23R01. Kelly, can you read that for us?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Sun Life Financial for life, voluntary life, and voluntary vision insurance for New Franklin's health insurance plan in declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, and we move to waive the three readings on 23R01.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R01.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 50. Resolution number 23R02.
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2022 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee also, and we move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R02.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 22R, I'm sorry, 23R02.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Resolution passes 50. We have resolution number 23R03.
A resolution authorizing the New Franklin Fire Department to purchase, install, and maintain an appropriate number of automated external defibrillators, AED, at Grill Park, Lakeside Park, Miracle Park, Siskel Park, and the Lockhart Field Complex in declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the safety committee, and we're moving to waive the three.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R03.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes 50. Resolution number 23R04, Kelly.
A resolution appointing Chrissy Gindelsberger as the new Franklin member of the Summit County Combined General Health District Board of Health in declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the community development committee, and we'd like to move to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
And we'd like to move to adopt resolution 23R04.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Senator?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes 50. We have no second readings, no third readings, and no pending registration. And now we go to our favorite part of the program, may answer questions.
You guys didn't know this was the favorite part.
I don't know. I tell them every time.
Didn't I?
Yeah, just a couple things you'd be happy to hear. First of all, I had a meeting with Donald Barlow, who is the president of Ohio Storage Services. And they purchased the Clinton Aluminum Building, and they will be doing business there. As Ohio Storage Services, it is essentially an in-and-out process relative to steel products. And it's, I guess, in and storage and out. It's, it's not a great number of employees, but that's, that's the intention that, that they have. And, and I will say, Mr. Barlow, he's a, well, everybody's younger than me, but he's a young fella. He's probably in his late 30s. Just really impressed with his personality. You know, he said, you know, down the road, that, you know, they, they have other ideas and ideas relative to expansion. Previously, that company was, did business as Ohio Steel Splitters, and they had a manufacturing processing plant down in Canton, Stark County. They got out of that for now. They may get back into that. He made it a point to, to say that, hey, listen, we know we're not bringing a lot of jobs, but we want to be supportive. We want to use local businesses for, for support. We're here to be a part of this community. We want to support community ventures and community activities. And so he comes with a really good attitude, so we welcome Donald Barlow and, and Ohio Storage Services. The, we will, I'll have a resolution next, for the next meeting, and it'll give me a heads, you know, kind of a heads up on it, to, to add two additional full-time police. And this is sort of an extension, I won't bore you with all the details of, you know, sort of the, the death of part-time. You know, that's, we see that coming, and we're not alone. Recruiting and training and attracting quality people gets harder and harder. And recruiting and attracting quality part-time people, it may become impossible. We have some good part-timers, really good ones. We don't want to lose. And not to prejudge, but we think we've reached the point where we sort of gotta rip off the bandage and, and make that move. And if and when we do, if council approves that, discussions I've had with, with our police are, you know, if we staff at that level, we're basically at essentially the same staffing level in terms of numbers, but we have a few less part-time and a few more full-time, and, you know, it's gonna cost us some more money. I asked, you know, do you anticipate 18 to 36 months that things are gonna change to a point where you're gonna say, "We need even more," and the answer to that is no. So I'll have, and we'll have plenty of time to have that discussion. It's, you know, and it goes many evenings as you might want to, and the chief will be, he asked a question. If he wanted, if we wanted to hear tonight, I told him I was just previewing it, and he'll be here at the next meeting. You know, you know, while I'm saying that, I want to do another hats off, since that's what I'm doing today. You know, we, we see officer safety is a major, major concern. And I, I, there was an incident yesterday, within the last 24 hours, at midnight shift, and you may have seen it, and it involved a chase, a pursuit. You know, that handband was recovered. You know, we need, we need sufficient force out there. And, you know, I love to think things are gonna get better. You know, probably not. So this would put us in a position where we'd always have three, and a lot of times we'd have four staff each shift. And that, I think we've reached a point where that's probably minimum staffing in terms of safety requirement. So we'll speak, obviously, more on that, but I just wanted to give you a little preview on that. All right, we did, we have confirmed that the $3 million grant for the Vanderhoof Pump Station was included in the, in the budget, in the federal budget. Clean Water State Revolving Fund. We want to thank Representative Gonzalez. It was his office that presented it. I think he had 15 projects that were, that were included, and ours was, you know, the highest dollar amount. It, the rollout on this is a little different than state money. We actually, you know, we've talked, I've talked with a consultant, and we expect that EPA will reach out to us in a few weeks to start that process. I don't know that we've, I, I believe this is the largest grant we've ever received, period, from anywhere. And I'm not sure that we've received federal grant money before. So it's a little different process. We've already had discussions with Summit County Sanitary Sewer. That process, just as, you know, maybe an update. You look over there, and there's a proposed sanitary sewer map that, I think that was printed in 2018. And none of that's happened yet. But the first leg of all that, the county's project to extend sewer into New Franklin, as we've talked, is to up the, from the Barbara wastewater treatment plant, up Vanderhoof, and then down 93 to Grace Church. And there's also, we have some sewer and some package plants. That Zellray Package Plant will become a pump station and, and pump into that sewer. So that project's, while everything's going much, much, much slower, and any extension into the neighborhoods is, nobody's even talking right now about when. So it's a big if, and so I, I don't even know when that may happen. But we did lobby, for lack of a better term, to try to get that leg down on the state route 93, because we've got a lot of people, property owners and business owners who want the sewer up there. So that's still on track. And the latest update on that is this, and I think it's a firm one, oh, it is. The county will be making the application for Ohio Public Works funding for that project and the ground and funding. Those applications, I believe, have to be in by the end of June. Then it's up to OPWC. They will need that approval. The anticipation was that they, you know, this was the kind of project that's been out there long enough that they would have expected that. This $3 million is, ties a big ribbon on it because it, it brings another player, and as, as somebody know, you know, you know, now it's, 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 it becomes more of regional, and that contribution's a big contribution. So without the OPWC money, then, you know, this, this is of no effect. So the anticipation is then that, that that will be approved sometime late in this year. If that's the case, they proceed then with the bidding process and probably be ready for, to begin some level of construction on that late next year. So this takes us into 2024. 12 to 18 months is what's anticipated. So now we're talking 2025, so the wheels turn slowly, but at least they're turning. And I have scheduled some further meetings with sanitary sewers to coordinate the, the funding aspect of this, because these funds will come, this will be faster money. These funds will come through, through the city of New Franklin. So that's the latest and greatest update on, on sewer up here. And we're obviously very pleased with, with that grant. Finally, it's always a good word you'd like to hear me say. I wanted to update you, we had the Parks Commission meeting last night, and had an excellent meeting. The finances there are this, we have about $185,000 carryover in parks. Our anticipated revenue, conservatively, we estimate at $150,000. That's the 5% of the income tax. It actually was closer to $200,000 this last year. But we still estimate it at $150,000. This is sort of a short form of the finances relative to parks. 75% of that 150, 75,000 of that will go back to general fund as we pay, kind of pay down that, the tennis courts, pickleball courts. The other 75,000, we project will be sufficient to cover our basic expenses for maintaining the parks and some limited amount towards a tour house. The Parks Commission determined internally that of this carryover of 185,000, we actually think we'll probably have an extra 40,000 or 50,000 because our expenses will be a little bit lower and the revenue's gonna be a little bit higher. That, that no matter what they did, the Parks Commission would be, continue to recommend about a $100,000 floor in terms of carryover for the, for that department, and would put us in a position that if all else failed, we still have funding for a year ahead to, to maintain what we're doing already. In terms of projects, we talked about it, there, there, several were discussed. We know there's things we want to do at Grill Park. The handicap playground, actually, a playground that includes handicap. Everybody feels that's a good idea, and that's a good location for it. The folks over there at Grill indicate they'd like to have some form of a pavilion. We've been talking about pavilion and Siskel for about 40 years. And so we, and, and it was the consensus of the Parks Commission to proceed first on the, on the Siskel pavilion. Much more modest than what we, Taj Mahal, we looked at several years ago, that was about $2.7 million. That was really, really nice, and it had restrooms. It was huge, and it had the concession stand and a second floor. And the consensus is that, you know, it's not just that we can't afford it, we really don't need it. The feeling was from Parks, and we've talked with the baseball people and the softball people, they'd just like to have a pavilion, very similar to what we have at, down at Lockhart, to get out in the sun, and, you know, to, to picnic when you have double headers and those kind of things. So the parks are on board for that. We've done some preliminary pricing on that. We were out, out of sight today, looking at where that might be. Our feeling is, and the consensus from the parks, is a 24 by 40-foot pavilion. And we think that that can, we can put that together for less than $50,000. So, yeah, so, so that's the plan. So the, the Parks Commission then proceeded, they, with their past motions to proceed with the, and, and, you know, this is their recommendation over the council, to proceed with pavilion and Siskel, to continue planning on the Grill Playground and put the plans together for that, and then seek grant funding for that. So we're gonna, they're gonna proceed. We got the subcommittees in a room on that in the Parks Committee. And then finally, there was the, the... And then finally, uh, there was the, the idea that was, and I was one who, who initially proposed the thought of renaming Grill Park. Uh, and we had that discussion a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it was, you know, a couple of things were brought to my attention, uh, and I shared those with the Parks Commission. Uh, one was, we only got so many parks. You know, and, and sometimes we look at history, it's only going up to the day. Uh, and this city's going to be here a long time. Uh, and there'll be others, I'm sure, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years from now that we may be want to honor in certain ways. Uh, the, uh, the, and secondly, there's, Grill Park means a lot to a lot of people who grew up there and went to school there, and their parents went to school there, and grandparents may have gone to school there. And, and if we change that name, that's all that's left of that school is Grill Park. So there's that aspect as well. So we had that discussion with, uh, and, um, it was suggested to me from outside the Parks Commission. I talked to the Parks Commission last night and the overwhelming, well, the majority, the unanimous feeling from them when they passed the resolution with this effect, or motion to this effect, was to keep Grill, Grill Park. Uh, but to, uh, pre, to come up with some form of, uh, memorial, uh, on, on that site for Francis and Gus Kalopatis, who collectively served twenty years over there. What might be ideal is if we can put this playground together. Uh, you know, given the fact of Mrs. Kalopatis, well, actually they were both educators. Uh, and in the, in public schools. Uh, so I think that would be a beautiful tribute. So that's, that's where the attention is right now coming from the Parks Commission. So, that's all I have.
Do you have anything from Susan?
I do not.
I think I heard you say you had something on the comprehensive thank you.
Yep, um, you know, not a whole lot. I, I did forget to bring the list of meetings, which I did the same thing. So if you've got, I know tomorrow night, five-thirty here at-
That is steering committee.
Steering committee meeting, yeah. So this is a steering committee meeting tomorrow. Um, and this is where we're really opening up. We, we have had a meeting here where we accessed and merged the data from the survey. Um, tomorrow is the meeting where the whole steering committee, hopefully the whole steering committee shows up, uh, will be here and we'll actually kind of start to parse the data and, and I think, I think put our vision together as to how we want to deal with the data as a, as a group. So the public is welcome. It's not like this, it's not necessarily a public input meeting. Um, but there are usually, there, there should be some time, at some point in the meeting for the public comment if anybody would like to come and make, and make a comment. That's at five-thirty here tomorrow. Did you find the, the dates of the, the workshops?
I know where they are.
Yep, there you go.
January twenty-sixth from six to eight. Did you go on to Gather?
Yes.
Yeah, January twenty-sixth from six to eight at Gather.
And then Tuesday, February seventh from six to eight?
February seventh from six to eight, also at Gather. These are workshops.
And Thursday, March ninth from six to eight?
Thursday, March ninth from six to eight, also at Gather. And those are public welcome, public involvement workshops where we, you know, uh, we would, we would like more. Um, you know, the steering committee, uh, it was, there was a selection committee that picked the people that are on the steering committee and the, the goal, and I think they succeeded at getting people from all different demographics of the community, all different areas of the community, uh, of all, all around the city. There's, it's definitely not a carbon copy, it's a diverse, it's a diverse group of folks. So, you know, now that we've got the survey, Mr. Sedgwick had a lot to do with the, the development and the production of this thing and it seemed to have gone well. We had great responses. So we're, we're excited.
There were residents on Point Comfort that did not receive the survey. I don't know how that happened because they're longtime residents, but, you know, handful of people, whether they got it and didn't ever see it.
So it was one, yeah, it was one per household and we found that the, the address list that we were, that we used most likely picked the youngest registered voter or the most, the person to most recently register to vote in the House. So if you had an eighteen or nineteen-year-old kid, it would probably have come addressed to them. Uh, but one, one went to each household. Now they were also still, then the reminder postcards came out. And the only thing, is all of Point Comfort in New Franklin?
Yes.
Of both sides?
Yes.
All through there? Okay. Um, because I know, I know you're close over there. That's the only other thing I was thinking was that there's a possibility that they were, they were in three. But things should start really rolling forward, so we really, we really invite the public's involvement. Uh, it's going to be a good, I think a lot of good stuff's going to come out of this.
We have a full-page ad, um, coming out Friday, um, announcing the, uh, public workshops as well.
Workshops, yeah.
Sounds like you've got a good turnout.
I hope so.
I hope so. You're welcome. Do we have any, um, old business? And new business?
Well, with, with old business, um, well, because, you know, Mr. Powell looked like he was ready to go. I, I just wanted with the marriage report, again, I wanted to, I want to thank the, the Park, uh, Commission. Uh, I, I think they do a wonderful job and, and they put a lot of thought and effort into what they do and, uh, they really seem to care about the city and the parks, and so, so I just want to say I appreciate their job.
I appreciate you. Can I ask you a question, is that a sure?
No, no, I was just, I probably knew business, that's why I asked about the grant funding. Is that going to, that's a passive, do we have to front those costs and then get reimbursed? Or?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that one yet.
I'm just wondering if we have to do something in preparation for those costs?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll find that out when they reach out to us.
I'm also curious whether it'll pass through to the county.
That's right. So, so, yeah, I just had some questions about how, with the invoices that have to be in New Franklin's name? Will it be in the county's? Or just something suggested somehow would work that out?
Yeah, well, I anticipate, and again, we'll sort of, you know, we don't have a, a form to follow on this one because it's the first time. Uh, I, I don't think it's the first time for the county, they've been through it. What I anticipate, what I expect is going to happen is some type of a, a joint agreement between the county and, and the city as to the administration of the funding. Uh, and I would be surprised if, I don't expect it to be, uh, a, a reimbursement plan. Uh, I expect it to be the fund will come in and then, you know, it'll be administered. There's a good chance that they'll come, that they'll come into New Franklin and go to the county because the county's going to be the lead on this project. So my best guess is that's the way it'll flow through.
You're confusing me. Is that old business or new business?
We'll, we'll go with business.
So we have any other old new business? No. Anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to add to or any questions they'd like to ask? No? I think we have need for an executive session tonight, Paul, am I correct?
Yes, we do.
It's going to be to, um, discuss confidential business information regarding requests for economic development?
That would be, that would be the purpose.
And I would make the motion for that, Kelly?
Second.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, we have enough time.
I'm about to go to the executive session.
I was.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Federman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We can give you the language.
I have it.
Yeah, okay.
As a point of order, I want to mention to the people that are out here, uh, that by basically law, when we go into executive session, we're required to go directly into executive session. So when we leave here and they'll come back and say hi to you, it's because we can't, we're supposed to go that way. So I just wanted, I think I'd be real-